Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the November 1st, 2016 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, President, Selectman Scasiotti, Selectman Troppiano, Chairman Whiteside, Clerk Titlebaum, and Town Administrator Sullivan.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Boyer. Excuse me. Mr. Minkel.
Yes.
Please, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Lead the way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To freedom and liberty, which stands as one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, Mr. Scasiotti?
Yes. November 11th, Veterans Day celebration will be held at 10:30, a parade on Main Street to Town Hall.
Mr. Troppiano.
We have two things. One, it's voting day next Tuesday if anybody hasn't heard.[101.28][101.28](Laughter). Just want to say. Make sure you get out and vote. It's the only way you have to tell people how you're feeling. And so get out there and do it. Secondly, I see a lot of political signs popped up on town property. If yours is one out there and you can hear me, get it off. We don't allow public signs on town property. I mean, we all have to do it, run, and we aren't allowed to do it, and neither are you. And get them off because otherwise, we're going to take them down. All right, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum?
None.
Okay. I have one, which is actually the same as Mr. Troppiano just had. At the request of Mary Ann Silva, the town clerk, you may not, well, I'll be more blunt. You may not put any of your signs on town property that have to do with elections. Period. End of discussion. And with the early voting, the clerk's office is very, very busy and doesn't have time to answer questions about whether this is town property, whether this isn't town property. Get the property owners permission to put your signs up, please. Just want to remind people, last week or the week before or something, you said, you know, guys, be careful on the road. Last Friday, we had five accidents within about two-hour period of time. It was raining, it was dark, and there were a lot of leaves on the ground, so please be careful. Thankfully, we had absolutely no incidences of children and any problems last night for trick-or-treating. And we set our clocks back, is that correct? Or forward? Fall behind.
Fall back.
Fall behind. So I'm going to be someplace where you all aren't because I'm going to not be on time.
Fall back.
I know, okay.
Fall back.
Do you have any announcements, Mr. Sullivan? No. Citizens' participation, it's nice to see you back, Mr. Barrows. Any citizens' participation? Anyone wish to speak to the board? No? A hearing, we need to reopen the hearing from August 23rd, 2016, on the street acceptance of Brittany Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Troppiano, seconded by Titlebaum, all those in favor of reopening the hearing. Roll call.
Titlebaum, yes.
Whiteside, yes.
Troppiano, yes.
Scasiotti, yes.
Yes, it is therefore, yeah, the hearing is reopened. Mr. Titlebaum, you have recommendations?
Yes, we have a recommendation from the planning board to place before town meeting a vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the layout, including the traveled way and associated stormwater drainage system and drainage adjustments, but do not recommend including the other utility infrastructure, which would exclude communications, electric, and sewage utilities.[294.33][294.33](Laughter).
What?
It's all right. Somebody saying something back there?
I had, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they're...
Thank you.
This letter is dated October 18th, 2016, so it's subsequent to our original hearing date, so in the meantime, they've gone out there, they've inspected it, they found that it's up to snuff, and they're recommending that we vote to approve the layout and put it on a town meeting warrant. So moved.
No, we got to close the hearing before we go.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
So we want to take some public input?
Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the acceptance of Brittany Drive? Is there anyone who would like to speak? Oh, yes. Okay, would you please come forward and just announce your name, please? And you can announce the names of the people with you. I'll let you get away with that one.
Let me guess, you live on Brittany Drive?
Yes.[354.53][354.53](Laughter).
Shocking.
I'm Bob Marso. My wife, Stephanie, and Jenny, our neighbor.
Last name?
Clifford.
Okay, so the three of you are in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just have one question. Are we, do we need a street acceptance plan, or is that already provided?
You must have provided one to the planning board.
So I'm assuming that you guys have everything you need to go to the next step.
Planning board had to have something to review, so you must have provided that.
We just want to make sure you guys have everything for the next step, that's all. That's it.
We will take a vote to send it back...
We'll go to town meeting.
We'll go to town meeting in April, and...
If approved...
Then goes back to us. Goes back to us to...
Get done, finally.[402.53][402.53](Laughter). It's like a ping-pong ball. To us, to them, to us, to someone else, to us, and then to the registry.
But we do have a written recommendation from the planning...
You've met your biggest hurdle.
Yeah, you've done the paperwork, but now you just have to wait for the clock to tick.
For town meeting to approve it.
Okay.
Time is almost here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Would you step forward and state your name, please?
Hi, I'm Virginia Clifford from Brittany Drive. So if we've done our part now, does that automatically mean now that this will go on the agenda for the April town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything else?
We're going to vote to put it on right now.
That's correct.
Okay, I see, okay, thank you.
We hope.
Right.
No guarantees, we're going to take the vote.
Yeah, true.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the acceptance of Brittany Drive?
Yes, I'm in favor.
The record will show that Gerald Barrows is also in favor. Is there anyone who would like to speak against the recommendation or the request?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Titlebaum, yes.
Whiteside, yes.
Troppiano, yes.
Scasiotti, yes.
That was to close the hearing. Now may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the layout of Brittany Way, I mean Brittany Drive.
Second.
You're going to put it at the town meeting, right?
And further to submit an article for same to town meeting.
Thank you.
Second. Motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by Scasiotti, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Will be on the town meeting warrant in April.
Thank you. I'll pass this around for signing.
You're welcome, thank you. Request, oh, Open Space Committee.
Yes, we have an application for the Open Space Committee for, from Amanda Smith. She received a unanimous vote to support the appointment from the Open Space Committee. I move that the Board of Selectmen...
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Wait, wait, what?
Would you like to address us? Ms. Smith? I have to say that I've met with Ms. Smith a couple of times, and she is one of those citizens that you better not ignore because she will work very hard for what she believes is the right thing. And I was at the meeting when the conservation, I mean, excuse me, the Open Space Committee made the recommendation to forward your request to be here, so I want to say that they were very much in favor. Would you like to address us?
Sure.
Sure.
I really appreciate the time and your consideration for me joining the Open Spaces Committee. My interest started in the spring. I'm a resident over in the Wee Wee Antique area. As you all know, there's a playground over there, that's a neighborhood playground. And so a neighbor and I, she actually started the initiative to get the neighborhood together and tried to see what we could do to that playground, which got me started.
Are you related to Robin Williams?
I am not.
You can talk almost as fast as he can.
I know, sorry, that was one of my failures. I like to save a little time, usually meetings.[605.82][605.82](Laughter).
Sorry.
You can read the warrant next time.
Yes.[610.41][610.41](Laughter). We'll borrow you. Sorry.
That's okay. No, it is very true. They say that about me at work all the time. So that was when my interest started. We started coming to open spaces, realized that the committee was low on members, and so certainly that's when my interest started, but, you know, speaking with them, we do have a number of playgrounds and open spaces that has some need. We obviously know about Lopes that just went before the town last Monday, but in reviewing the assessments and the plans that have been done to date, I think one of the key things that we need to work on is a plan. Because I know, Judy, you asked Open Spaces to prioritize them. Although I wasn't a member of the committee, I actually suggested that they sort of push back and wait because of how should we prioritize those types of playgrounds and what's the intent of that. And so I think we have a lot of information. I think it's time for the Open Spaces Committee to kind of step forward and make a plan around the different playgrounds, because there's a lot of them. And none of them are in good shape, if you've been to them, other than the school playgrounds, so.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks for stepping up.
Great.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Amanda Smith of 2013th Avenue, Wareham Mass. 02571, as a member of the Open Space Committee to return to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Titlebaum, seconded by Troppiano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Your paperwork will be ready in the Selectmen's office tomorrow.
You have to go get sworn in.
Thank you very much. And then you go to the clerk's office, you pick the packet up, and then you go to the clerk's office and be sworn in, and then you are officially a member. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Library Board of Trustees, we have a recommendation there?
Yes, we do. Is Mr. Fuller present?
Would you step forward?
Come on up.
Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Yes, we have a recommendation from the Library Board of Trustees recommending him for appointment.
Would you like to address us, Mr. Fuller?
I am looking forward to working with the other board members in the Board of Selectmen and helping bring our library back. After your experience in the field, being a member of the Quincy Library, Friends of the Quincy Library, I was preschool teacher for 25 years, and I appreciate the children's library and all the great asset that we have across the street, and I'm looking forward to help working to make it the best on the south shore.
You were a preschool teacher?
I know, I look more like a law shaman.
No, you look like a high school teacher. I can't imagine with a bunch of little five-year-olds, I'm sorry.
Over 20 years.
I would laugh myself sick the whole time.
Yeah.
Sorry.
At the children, Judy.
At the children, yes, not at you, yes.
As would they at you.
Yes, as they would at me. Okay, we're really going farfield. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Frederick Fuller Jr. of 35 Shangela Boulevard, Wareham Mass. 02571, as a member of the Library Board of Trustees to return to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by Troppiano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. Your paperwork will be in the Selectmen's office...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, and you will be, then go to the town clerk and be sworn in.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we have a request from Little Harbor Country Club for a change of hours of operation.
Mr. DiRienzo. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Thank you for hanging the quilt, sir.
You're welcome.
Nice to have...
You didn't have to come for this.
I know, well, yeah.
We had to take your time up for this, we would have done this for you.
Yeah, it's a private party, so we never, yeah.
But, ladies and gentlemen...
It's nice to see you. How have you been?
Nice to see you, I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Yes, and they run nice fundraising activities.
Also wanted to introduce myself to everybody. My name is Kenny DiRienzo. I'm the Assistant General Manager at the Little Harbor Country Club. I hope to be the future of that place, too, so you'll probably be seeing a lot of me.
Good, thanks. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application of Little Harbor Country Club Inc., DBA Little Harbor Country Club, 1 Little Harbor Road, Wareham, Mass. Manager Christine B. DiRienzo for a change in hours of operation, November 12th, 2016, to open at 8:00 a.m. and to close at 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion made by Mr....
For the sale of all alcohol.
Titlebaum and seconded by Mr. Troppiano, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. You're all set. Kenny, you can pick that up tomorrow at the Selectmen's office.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, bud.
Nice to see you guys, too.
Mr. DiRienzo is a successful graduate of, guess what?
One of your classes.
He wasn't in one of your classes, was he?
Let's get the poor gentleman counseling.
Yeah, you need some counseling?
He did. Okay, next we have the introduction of the 2016 Grand Marshal for the parade. Do you identify yourselves for the board?
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Minkel.
Hello there.
Mr. Minkel is our Grand Marshal for Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, and he's been in the community for quite some time. A lot of the students, he's had several students also over the last 30 years, but he'll explain to you, so that you, some of you might know who he is already.
So Judy, I just want to say that I'm sad that you left before my grandsons had a chance to have you as a teacher.
Thank you. Maybe.
Well, you're being picked on, so I have to help you.
Oh, thank you.
So I came to onset in, as a four-year-old in 1956, and left for a while, came back, didn't really expect to come back to Wareham. Went in the service, went to school in Boston, and ended up in onset, and then Wareham, and it was a great decision. And so here we are, 30 years in the school system, retired in June, and Sharon reached out to me, and this would be a reason to come out of retirement.
Awesome.
I have to say that Mr. Minkel was responsible every year for the past several years for putting little flags all the way up and down Viking Drive, from the middle school to the end of, you know, to the public road, which I think was an absolutely wonderful display of patriotism, but it was also a lesson to the kids about, you know, symbolism and caring about a community.
Right. And it's become more important, given what's happening in some parts of the rest of the country.
You think?
Yes.
Absolutely. I'd also like to thank you for your service, prior service to our country. Thank you.
Very nice.
The only question I have is, I'd like to know if I can put up a sign?
We actually have those, that request right here, request to place signs on town property. Go ahead, shoot.
That's the only thing, we have one sign, and we'd like to be able to put it up for Veterans Day. The request came to me stating that if I put a sign up on Main Street, it had to be double-sided. We don't have a double-sided sign, so can we possibly put up the sign in that Bessie Park area that we have done on the past?
To the right, I think we allow, right?
Correct.
To the right on Bessie Park.
On the island in front of the Toby Homestead, I think, is where they can go.
Okay, all right. So at this time, that would be our only request, because we don't have a double-sided sign yet.
Yeah, to the island.
Yeah, the island, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll see you. Do you have anything?
Congratulations.
Put a sign on town property, on the island at Main Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Troppiano, seconded by Scasiotti to allow the Veterans Day Parade Committee to put a sign up on town property.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Okay, guys, yeah, I know. Okay. Confirmation of the MOU between the Town of Wareham, Wareham Free Library, Wareham Free Library Foundation, and Friends of the Wareham Free Library. This document has previously been signed by myself and Mr. Sullivan, and the library had asked that we have a more public and ostentatious signing and make a big deal out of it, so...
Why don't you, Frederick, go up to the table and do it with everybody there?
Okay.
She's what?
Yeah, she's off her game tonight, that's right.
You're fine.
No, I'm really not.
You're fine. You might need counseling, but you're fine.[1222.76][1222.76](Laughter).
We need a motion, right?
We already did it.
We did it already, okay.
Yeah, I know.
I just don't remember that we did it, that's all. It's okay.
Can you bring me a pen, please?
As long as we did it, it's okay with me.
Your pen's not working?
No, we've got several people here.
This one's not in the best of shape.
I have one that's been chewed on, if they don't mind the end of it. I didn't chew on it, by the way.
Seriously, did not need to hear that one. Thank you. Trivia. Who was the attorney, Assistant District Attorney, Ted Kennedy?
Used as counsel.
Yeah, trial. Primary joke, Peckney's death.
That's one out of the best, out of blast, out of the plaster, huh?
Well, you have to, never sign anything. The signers in this instance are the Wareham Town Administrator, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair of the Wareham Free Library Trustees, the President of the Wareham Free Library Foundation, and the President of the Friends of the Wareham Free Library. What? I think they're picking on me. Who was defending me earlier? Could somebody please defend me?
He left. Your one show, mine left.
Here we go.
He was done defending you.
Seriously, don't think this is a good...
He did as much as he could, and he left.
I have all kinds of things I'm going to leave with you. Only this one, no, I thought I'll tell you about it.
Put me on microphone, shuts off, says that.
Yes.
They want you on all the time. Just keep an eye on that Troppiano guy.
Keep an eye on him.
Buttering under his breath.
Just remember that he's, he's live all the time. You know, I don't want to get caught in the trailer, you know.
This is an, this is an agreement that's been worked on for a couple of years now, and what is doing, is creating a public-private partnership to encourage the community to support the growth of the library. How was that? That was good, Judy. Friends of, Friends of the Library to bring us up to date on fundraisers. Now, before you do that, I really would like to have Mr. Titlebaum, please stand up and take a bow.
For what?
Because you were a frog. And, well, you're not up here in the front, but, okay.
I still believe in standing up.
Okay, stand up and take a bow. Michael, as well. Yeah, he did. Actually, he memorized his lines, so he made us all look bad. Please don't do that again, that was really shocking. Pick on Judy Day.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Priscilla Porter, I'm the President of the Friends. The first fundraiser is this quilt, which is on display. We will have the drawing for the quilt will be at our Holiday Fair, December 3rd. Tickets are available at the library. I also carry them in my purse all the time, and they are $5 each. The quilt was given to the Friends for fundraiser by the Busy Bee Quilters Guild that meet twice a month at the library. I mean, it's beautiful. And it's queen size, heavy, keep you nice and warm. Hopefully, we'll do quite well, and I'll repeat it again, tickets are $5 each. Next thing is our jewelry and accessory sale, which we are asking the public to please donate jewelry they no longer need or want. We take broken things. We will also take hats, gloves, gently-used purses, and scarves. The sale will start Thursday, the 17th of November. It will be 4:00 to quarter to 7:00. It will continue on Friday, noon to 5:00, and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We did it, I think it was like three years ago. It was a huge success, people loved it. We're also adding Scott Dean of Gregory Scott Jewelers will be on site on Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00 to appraise jewelry. Of course, it's not for insurance purposes, but they will tell you if you question the value of something, and if you have gold and silver, he can purchase it. So that will be kind of an added feature. We also, our Holiday Fair's coming, and of course, like always, we ask the members of the Friends and anybody else that likes to bake, to make cookies, to add to it. We will be having that, plus we have books for sale, and we have two or three vendors. Also, that is December 3rd, it's 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. And we are doing another thing. You're going to be seeing these around town. Right now, we have a bin at Riverside Cafe. It's to collect new or gently-used books to give to the children that come to the various storytimes at the library and at the Spiny Memorial Branch. We were doing that in the past. Unfortunately, we don't seem to get as many children's books, so we have been unable to do that, so we're asking if people will help us. And these books aren't for our sale, they're to give to the participants in the story hour. And I've been there when the kids have gotten books, and it's unbelievable how happy they are, like you've given them a special gift. So we'd like to be able to do that again. So far, we just have the one place, but we are looking for other locations to put our bins. And also, we will again this year at the library, the staff is putting together the list of gift books. We did the, did it last year, and we were able to give the town, the library through the town, $1,500 to purchase specific books that people had bought. And those that buy them, the book plate in that book acknowledges their purchase, or if you do it in honor of somebody, that will be in each book. And they range from, you know, adult, young adult, children. But that will begin probably right after Thanksgiving, and the list will be posted in the library. That's it.
Do you have...
Folders for...
Yeah, do you have an initial amount of money that you think maybe the town fathers and mothers of this town made for the library with that ridiculous play that they embarrassed themselves in? Roughly?
Roughly $6,000.
Nice.
You know, I know everybody thinks of me being with the Friends, but I'm... You know, I know everybody thinks of me being with the Friends, but I'm also a member of the foundation. It was wonderful. We appreciate all the work that went into it. I was fortunate enough that I got to see all the rehearsals, too.
Had to be in some of them.
Yeah, well, that too. But it certainly, I mean, it was great. There's nothing else you can say. It was great. Everybody seemed to thoroughly enjoy it, including the cast. So it, it was wonderful, and it was wonderful to see such a large crowd. You know, I can't say enough. I believe the Wareham community is extremely generous. They always come through when you ask. And I feel it's a privilege to live here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request to place a memorial bench on Onset Pier.
You gonna make a motion? Per other guidelines, right?
Yes.
Do you realize that I signed the first set of guidelines in 2002?
We do have guidelines for commemorative benches in the town.
Yes, we do.
It was adopted in 2002 and reviewed as lately as 2014. We have a request for a bench for Mr. John... A request for a bench for Mr. John King. John King was an engineer, a consulting engineer, who actually worked with the, for the installation, on the installation of the walkways and the period lamp posts along the onset bluffs. He died in July, and his family has asked that they be allowed to place a bench.
Okay, move to approve the application for the bench in memory of John King on the onset pier.
Motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by... God, Tropiano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, the problem is that, you know, in order to be formal, you have to use the... Look, it's TTS. S. That's tough. Actually, it's B S T.
Oh, my God. BS?
Okay.
Bowen and Sullivan, BS.
Appears to private roads. We have requests for repairs to...
Yeah, I'll take care of them. Let's see.
Oh, you're not gonna let me talk anymore?
No, pretty much. Saving you from yourself. We have a request from the residents of Wishbone Way for road repairs to be performed by the Municipal Maintenance Department labor and the use of the grader in the amount of $383.84. I move that we approve this application for road repairs. So moved.
Motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by Tropiano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, move.
We have another one from McKinley Street. Same thing. The residents have petitioned for road repairs. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application of the residents of McKinley Street for road repairs, for labor and use of the grader in the amount of $383.84.
Second.
$9,000. Just hush you.
Motion made by... Titlebaum and seconded by Scasiotti. I heard you first. Or second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and is unanimous. I would point out that the residents pay an invoice of... For personnel and grader. So those funds are collected upfront after all of the proper paperwork has been filed. Thank you.
Point of tax possession.
Next is appointment of a tax possession auction custodian. Mr. Sullivan, do you have one?
We are having a tax possession auction. I'll read that off during my TA report. However, when you appoint me that, I am the one to approve whether the property will be let go for the final bid amount. So that's why I need those powers invested.
The thing came in the mail.
Yeah.
Today, a matter of fact.
So we're appointing you the custodian?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to appoint the Town Administrator as the custodian of the tax possession auction.
For?
For the November 15th, 2016 auction.
Motion made by Titlebaum and seconded by Scasiotti. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and is unanimous. We already did the request for signs on town property. We have a bill from Mr. Bowen's office.
Anybody with 48-hour business first?
No.
No. All right. Yep, we've got the monthly bill from Attorney Bowen in the amount of $15,416.66, and he says he worked 122.4 hours.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And may I have the approval of the minutes? We'll get to you, sir. You guys are making faces. May I have the motion for October 18th, please?
Yeah, I move that the Board approve the minutes of October 18th, 2016, as presented.
Motion made by Titlebaum, seconded by Tropiano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and is unanimous. Now, we will go back to the Town Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, there's an interesting thing. There's a story out there about a mayor in a small Russian village that's actually selling the town hall to beat the budget.
Is he trying to influence our election?
So when you see the flyer, that the town hall's on that, we are not auctioning off the town hall. We've actually received requests about that. We are not. However, on Tuesday, November 15th, at 1:00 p.m. at the town hall in 54 Marion Road, we will be auctioning off six properties. The first one, 25 Kermesit Road, which is a Cape Cod-style home in nice condition. Second, 14 Plymouth Avenue, raised ranch on 1.5-acre waterfront site. 21 Parker Drive, ranch and established neighborhood. 6 Leonard Street, which is a single-family cottage. 31 Plymouth Avenue, which is a grandfathered lot close to Glen Pond. And 1820 Allen Avenue, which is a land parcel, which is essentially a waterfront parcel as well.
Can you explain what a grandfathered property is, please?
Well, that one would be a buildable property.
Thank you.
So these are the six properties, and if you've seen, I think last time, a group of, groups stood by and watched the auction, they do a great job. So it's really, they've done some great work for us. I appreciate Mr. Foster and all his staff. I don't think people realize how much work needs to be done to get us to this point. And we never wanna, we actually truly never want to own property. That's not the business that we're in. So this is a last resort, and it takes a lot of work and effort to even get to this point, which we really don't want to. But again, not auctioning off town hall yet. The other item is, we have some money set aside for training, and I'd like to see if you want to establish dates in either November or January to have the citizens planners come in and do a master plan workshop as part of getting everything together. If that's something we're interested in.
Absolutely.
Okay. What I would do is, we'd just establish the time, try and make sure it doesn't coincide with any of the other groups. Have the workshop come together and invite as many people as possible. Even people from outside the town come from other communities, but let's hold it, let's get it going, so.
Excellent.
Speaking of workshops, kind of stuff like that, at some point, we need to do a workshop committee for our boards and commissions relevant to ethics.
Yep.
We haven't done one in a long time, and maybe we need...
Got Attorney Bowen to do it, yeah.
Mr. Bowen knows that...
Is that a good...
Yeah, that'd be great, and, yeah, an interest, we had the, we actually had, what, the AG's office down on some of the other stuff as well, so let's see if we can't... I'd also like to use, now that we've got the event center there at the Marriott Hotel, that's a great spot. We've been trying to get the state down to run a few things in here, because we're so centrally located, it works perfectly, so. The other item that I have... If you give me one second, it's...
Dedrick. One moment, Dedrick.
You got dead airspace here, you don't want TV.
I know.
No, I know. Okay, let's sing. Just as a reminder, the parade will be starting at Bessie Park at 9:30, is that correct?
10:30.
10:30, yeah, but I don't know when it steps off.
It steps off at 10:30.
So it steps off at 10:30, so it starts gathering, people start gathering before that time. It is rain or shine. I would remind people who complain about marching in the rain that soldiers don't have a choice of where they fight. So, be there or be square.
We're good. You don't...
You're all set now?
We're good.
Okay.
Let's stop, let's cut this out.
This was a memo from Chief Kevin Walsh regarding the Wareham Police Department partnership with the Massachusetts Special Olympics. And Derek, I just wanted to give you a quick note regarding the recent involvement of the WPD in the Massachusetts Special Olympics. Through the efforts of School Resources Officer Carl Baptiste, the Wareham Police Department has formed a partnership with the Massachusetts Special Olympics and the law enforcement torch run. On Saturday, October 22nd, officers, including Chief Walsh, participated in the Tippecop event to benefit Special Olympics athletes held at the Red Robin Restaurant, where donations were accepted by officers who interacted with customers and actually assisted the hard-working Red Robin employees with their afternoon, during the afternoon. The citizens of Wareham who came to Red Robin on Saturday generously donated $2,225 to the Special Olympics, which greatly impressed the organization and led to an invitation for the Wareham Police Department to be represented and to help welcome athletes onto the field at Gillette Stadium during opening ceremonies at the Special Olympics State Flag Football Game and torch run on November 19th.
Awesome.
So we'd like to, again, sincerely thank the citizens of Wareham who contributed at the Red Robin event, and the Wareham Police Department looks forward to being involved in further events with such a great organization as the Massachusetts Special Olympics.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Would you extend our congratulations and thanks to Mr. The Chief?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, sir?
No.
Liaison initiative reports, Mr. Scasiotti. Mr. Scasiotti has taken on a couple of new liaison assignments, and so he will be contacting the chairs or whatever of the, of the different committees or whatever. Everybody's picking on me tonight. Yes, sir.
I just wanna use a couple of minutes here. I, I was, I missed town meeting, and very disappointed that I had to. But I want people to understand that I hadn't seen my oldest daughter, who turns 40 this year, in probably five or six years. So she called up and said, can you come to New York? I wanna meet you in New York. So I went to New York, and I spent three days there. One of them happened to be Monday. Didn't come home until Tuesday. But I wanna tell you, what a great time that is. If anybody gets a chance to go to Times Square, just remember you gotta do a lot of walking. Our hotel was on 40th Street, and we had to walk to 55th Street most of the time, because a lot of the stuff is that way. And that's 15 blocks, and you might think that that's pretty close, but it's a long way to go. We get up early in the morning. I think it was, it might have been Monday morning, and we went to this place called the Starlight Restaurant, and they sing, the waiters actually sing, and they do show tunes and everything and all that. The food's okay. It's not the best in the world, but okay. But the singing was fantastic. These are all kids trying to get onto Broadway and all that. And it took us 60 minutes to walk there, 53, sorry, 53 minutes to walk there for breakfast. And one day, I burned 3,400 calories, walking around New York until about, you know, 11 o'clock at night.
How much did you eat at breakfast?
Well, yeah, I mean, well, I don't think that much. I got to Soho, and I got to get, you know what a cronut is? Has anybody ever heard of this thing? It's a croissant doughnut, and apparently, they invented them in Soho. So we went there, and we went way out of our way to get there, and we walked, I don't know how many hours to get there. We were walking forever, it seemed. And we got down there, and of course, there was a big sign when we walked in that said, "We sold 350 cronuts today, and therefore, we don't have any." So, I didn't get my cronut, but I understand. It's a pretty great thing. But if you get a chance to go there, it's a great time, just to walk around, you know, all the things. They got tours and everything. It was terrific. Not to, not to pitch New York, but it was a lot of fun. But I did miss everybody at town meeting, and I had a lot of people call me up and say, geez, where were you? You missed a town meeting, you know? And you never miss a town meeting. Where you been? Sometimes it happens, and in this particular instance, I just wanted everybody to understand why I wasn't there. It wasn't that I didn't love everybody and didn't wanna be there.
Family comes first, and we all know that, sir.
I had to, I got to see her, and it was awesome. She came home for a couple of days with me after that, and it was really kinda nice, so.
So that was the cronut that stole town meeting?
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. Titlebaum, do you have anything positive to say?
Oh, I've got lots of things to say.
No, positive, I used the adjective.
We're all on a roll tonight.
No, just actually, upcoming liaising, I guess you could call it. Tomorrow evening, I'm gonna be meeting with the Wareham Village Association to talk about some interesting things that could be coming to the village and also Tremontale. And I'll repeat that on Thursday morning with the Destination Management Organization, and that's all I have.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Remember that November is Movember, and there's one police officer who was growing a beard in...
He's growing a mustache.
A mustache, excuse me, a stash, to combat cancer. And he's hoping to raise $300, and I think he had raised $100 the last time I know. So stop by and drop a few dollars instead of spending them on a nip or a package of cigarettes or a cronut or something like that. A lot of people in this town do a lot of things that we don't really know about. Sometimes they're covered in the process, and sometimes they're not. There are many people who regularly pick up trash. The converse of that is that there are many people who regularly toss their trash, including on Main Street. Guys, if you don't care enough about this town to keep it clean, I don't know why you are... Well, I was about to say that, and then I thought, well, you know, do you do that in your home? You probably do. Do you do it in your car? The front seat of my car is a pigsty, but I don't throw it out on the, I take it to the trash barrel in my garage.
And I noticed that today.
Yes, so I'm driving down the street today and minding my own business, I was trying anyway. And this tall man is standing there like this, and then he goes like this, and I pull over, and Patrick says, hi, where's your battery? Excuse me? I have no idea. He says, what side of the car is your battery on? I don't know. Well, open your...
It's even worse, you didn't know how to open the hood.
Open your hood, I said. I don't know how to do that. So I got out of the car and let him get into the car so that he could open the trunk so that I could lose, use his jumper cables to start his car. So for those of you who watched us have a meeting this morning, it was discussing jumper cables.
You know, they, you know, I left the lights on in the car while I was inside getting coffee, and the battery just went right down to nothing, so I couldn't start the car. And it's amazing, you know, the, it's hard to get people to jump you anymore.
And Carl Baptiste was standing there, right there.
Well, he was in the, he was inside. I was waiting for him to come out. He was in the, getting his haircut. He doesn't have any hair, though. That was the funny part. Have you noticed? He was getting a shave, I guess, you know? He was getting a little shave.
I think that we've had enough. Right?
It's quite the evening.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, Wareham. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.